Start then?
Hello, we are now over to start. Um, please rise for the respect of the mayors for incoming our incoming of our Vice Mayor, Mr. Troy Olegario and our Madam Secretary, Madam Mr. Lita Igia.
Morning to each and everyone. The 147th Regular Session is hereby called to order. Start with everybody is requested to please remain standing for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem.
...
Please be seated. Requesting our Madam Secretary for the roll call.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Okay, good morning to each and everyone. Welcome to the 147th Regular Session. Uh, Mr. Chair, it's obvious that only five are present with you. The Honorable Vice Mayor, Ramzes Troy Olegario, Honorable Glenn Ian Sabihoan, Honorable Elias Nangpalan, we have Honorable Sir Rafino Ramos, and we have Honorable Alhapiid Muhammad. There are only five sir, we are not yet encorru.
Okay, considering with only five members present, the chair would like to declare a fifteen minutes recess while waiting for the others to come. We left a seat. Uh, look forward to the governance. With the presence... Chair would like to declare that there's a corrum. Uh, Mr. Floor Leader for the adoption of the order of business. Mr. Chair, um, uh, would like to move for the approval of order of visas for today's regular session, Mr. Chair. Second with motion. Julie surrendered by the Honorable Sheriff Mazin Hasim. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? The motion is hereby dismissed. Um, Sir Floor Leader, do we have visitors for this morning?
Mr. Chair, I move to suspend the rules to accommodate our visitors.
A rule suspended.
Mr. Chair, um, we have a visitor for today. Um, the name of our former, um, uh, member of this, um, SB member, um, Darami Catalunya, our, our Regional Director for Trade. Ma'am, you may have the floor now.
Good morning. Hello. May I unbutton your turtleneck? Um, I'm going to introduce my Vice Mayor, Honorable Rambo Olegario, of Mayor-elect. And of course, I'm going to introduce my SB Secretary, my fellow members of the Sanguniang Bayan, uh, my former colleague, um, of course, my staff here in Sanguniang Bayan, uh, and the Secretary's office personnel, um, I'm going to introduce my resident residents who are going to be here today. Are we live?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good morning. It's great to be back here. And, uh, the perfect is so timing. Um, the timing is so perfect. I'm going to say it myself because of happiness. Happiness that, um, we finished the election with peace and, um, I'm not going to say anything else. And I'm going to say that I'm going to retire. And we won the game. Um, of course, we didn't lose. Uh, we passed the election. Um, we know everything happens for a reason. We're going to win. We're going to win. Um He allows things to happen for us and for a reason. So Good morning everyone. I am here finally. Um, I am proud to say and to inform that we are going to celebrate the fifty-second Department of Tourism anniversary in the municipality of Epeel. In twenty twenty-three, we celebrated the fiftieth anniversary in Zamboanga City with a different theme and um different activity. Last year, the fifty-first anniversary, we celebrated it in Zamboanga del Norte in Liloi, and we launched the Z-Sider. The Zamboanga Peninsula Sustainable Development um Z-Sider Innovators um for no, the development, um environment and recreation. Whew. I'm just overwhelmed. I'm lost without myself. Um, in short, they are they are our tourism ambassadors in the whole Zamboanga Peninsula. So this year, the host province is Zamboanga, Cibugay. And the host L G U is the municipality of Epeel. So it's a destination-driven um anniversary. And next year, it could be in Zamboanga del Sur or in Basilan. Um, we tour around Zamboanga Peninsula to showcase and let uh let the world know that we are safe and lovely place. So today, I'm asking for this floor for a coordination um for the upcoming activity which is the Tourism Color Run twenty twenty-five. So this is not an ordinary run, fun run. This is an advocacy run. And um we are going to feature the Rotonda as a known tourist attraction. And another one is the emerging or lesser-known site which is the Pungko Pungko. Why I chose Pungko Pungko? Because I want to revive this place. I want to get rid of the negative notion about the area. Remember before um she was attacked and she was beaten up. She was beaten up. No, she was beaten up. She was killed. Um, the other meaning of salvage zone. So let's get rid of that kind of um I'm scared. I'm afraid of the flood. At Zamboanga Peninsula, I mean in the province of Cibugay, but the entire Zamboanga Peninsula. The potential is very great. We in the Department of Tourism um acknowledges that what we want is coordination, partnership with the L G U because we cannot do it on our own. And we hope this time you can help me. You can help me. For the tourism in Epeel. Can you do it? Okay, right? I'm going to go to the company. I'm going to go to the company for the tourism advocacy. My company is not good. So um now I'm asking for your support. Uh um I'm going to go for the advocacy run. Advocacy run because it's not about it's not just about tourism inclusivity, but it involves H I V awareness and environmental stewardship. So we would like to invite our um L G B T community to support the H I V awareness and of course the health um sector in this municipality. And for the environmental stewardship, we include in the run the cleanup drive in Pungko Pungko. So before we start our development for tourism in Pungko Pungko, let's clean up first and recognize the place for its potential. Um Basically, I'm going to go for the road closure. But I understand that again, I'm going to go for the road closure. Uh, I'm afraid of road closure. But I understand, of course, that again, I'm going to go for the road closure. If you don't mind. But I understand, of course, that again, I'm going to go for the road closure. Um, so far this this before anything else, um this event is in partnership with the Rotary Club of Epeel Cibugay Chapter and uh the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. And to add up to that, the L G U of Epeel and the L G U of Zamboanga, Cibugay. So going back to the route, um it will start in Freedom Park. Then we will go to the Rotonda. Um, hi, sir Bob. And then um we will go to Magdaop. Um going right, going to the right side. And then Pungko Pungko. And then we will go to the highway, to the diversion, then we will go back to Freedom Stage. So first, I'm going to go for the road closure. But for the road closure, um for a specific time only, um Kay, we are going to start early in the morning, man. So we're going to start three A M um for registration and claiming of distribution of anniversary shirt. The first four hundred participants will receive a free advocacy shirt. And this run is for free. There will be food stations and of course, we will get a medal, finisher medal. Um, free gift for the people to join. So I'm going to go for the road closure. Um, since we're going to start early and for the safety of our participants, um I'm asking for road closure here in the Freedom Stage area. Then to the Rotonda, a specific time only. Then going to um, we will go to the Picas Calzada for exit two, I mean going to Magdaop now. Uh, and then we will go back to the highway. Not really the road closure, but we're just going to have marshals. And I'm going to go to the diversion road for that specific time. Good morning, Kons. Uh, that specific time during the cleanup. So I'm going to memorize the names of the streets. Um, I'm going to go for the road closure. And um included in this run or while during the run, we're going to splash color. That's why it's a color run. Um, we're going to introduce reintroduce our use of zampen, the free colors, the sunset orange, which represents the culture, the warmth of the people, um the azure blue, which represents the coastal line and marine biodiversity of Zamboanga Peninsula, and the palm green, which represents our um lush greenery and mountain ranges. So um thank you for accommodating me today. And I hope it's not just the resolution or the ordinance that I'm going to ask from you, but for your presence as well, for you to join us. Okay, if you don't mind. We need to shake off the ano, the negativity around us and start fresh. Um, it's go it's on May eighteen, Sunday, and it's just a morning run. Kay, I saw you were healthy. You're a healthy baby. Ah? I saw you. I saw your staff. You're healthy now. So I'm like you. So I'm just going to go. So thank you, Kayo. And as regards the, as I said earlier, as regards the specific time and I mean the morning only, in the morning only, uh maybe from, maybe midnight up to in the morning. The event starts at nine A M. You're going to go there. And then um establish the parking area. You're going to go to the parking space behind the drive-thru. The parking space and to accommodate for other participants because we are expecting um eight hundred participants and then one thousand including our um working committee and security personnel. So I'm not going to memorize the names of the streets. May? May eighteen? When did you come? When did you come? It's Sunday now. It's Sunday, May eighteen, uh early morning.
Yeah, uh before uh considering that um the activity is fast approaching and we don't have uh we don't have a session for this uh to to make this uh road closure ordinance, uh may we ask from your end, the sketch?
Yes, 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 I will. Definitely, I will.
The Honorable Sabihan being the chair of the Committee on Transportation, uh maybe on the part of other matters, uh pass on that.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone.
Arti, thank you for visiting us.
And before we move, Mister Chair, I would like to relinquish the floor to our regular floor leader, Honorable Batuchong.
Okay, recognizing the presence of the Honorable Chong, the Honorable Teralba, and the Honorable Palalan. Good morning. Honorable Chong? Our regular floor leader? Done, done. I acknowledge the Honorable Palalan. May we proceed, Mister Floor Leader, for the uh reading of the minutes of the previous session at the same time for the approval?
Honorable Chair, I move to dispense.
Mister Chair, privileged motion. Uh before we will proceed with this, I would like to ask for the indulgence of everyone that I did not wear their prescribed uniform, our prescribed uniform in this regular session.
Okay, okay. Um before Mister Floor, may we proceed first with the privilege hour? Privilege hour?
Honorable Chair, there are none privileges ours. Is there any member of this honorable chamber who resist the bail, Honorable Chair? I move that Honorable Dankpalan be recognized.
To our presiding officer, Honorable Vice Mayor Ramses Troy Oligario, our Mayor Olig. Uh my colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, a pleasant good morning to all of us and to all of visitors. It is my honor and privilege to stand to all of you. I to stand before you today to express my wholehearted thanks. Wholehearted thanks to all of you who supported me for the just concluded twenty twenty-five midterm election. I know and also you know that my winning as a Sangunian Bayan member was due to the contribution or services rendered my late wife Farida Anduhol Dankpalan. I didn't lie. I met her in Epeel. And you, my dear colleagues, are with you. I am promising my unwavering in support and will fully cooperate with the incoming administration. Good agenda for the betterment of our beloved town Epeel. Again, with your heart and gratitude, I express my thanks to all of you. All Epeleños, stay alive. And I love you all, Epeleños.
Next?
Next, is there anyone who wishes to bail at the privilege hour? Please raise your hand. Since nobody is raising their hand, Honorable Chair, it's getting very true. This is Junction, Honorable Chair. I I'll move to dispense the reading of the previous min of the minutes of the previous session and at the same time move for its approval. I so move, Honorable Chair.
Second with motion to dispense with the reading, same time the approval. You're seconded by the Honorable Sabihan. Any objection will be heard. The motion is hereby approved. Madam Secretary for the
Okay, for the reference of business calendar and for our trading under other communications, we have here the S K annual budget for C Y twenty twenty-five for barangays Lower Taway and Sanito.
Honorable Chair, I move that this item be referred to Committee on Appropriation.
Prefer this matter to Committee on Appropriations.
Item B, we have here a communication from Ms. Judeline Sepe, our M S W D O, requesting for an amendment of the resolution on the billing statement of Doctor de Villia Hospital, the amount of one point six nine hundred uh one point one million six hundred ninety-nine point seventy-five to nine hundred thirty-four thousand one hundred forty as a result of the review and reconciliation of the records and requesting further to consider the payable amount of the other services service providers of the L G U as certified by the municipal budget officer as of February twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. The available appropriation under I X is account uh count to one million six hundred thirty-four thousand six hundred eighty-five as detailed below. Doctor de Villia Hospital, nine hundred thirty-four thousand one hundred forty, F C C Family Care Clinic, two hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred forty-five, and Villia Babas, four hundred thirty-nine thousand three hundred, total of one million six hundred thirty-four thousand six hundred eighty-five.
Let's see pressure of the body.
Honorable Chair, I move that this item be referred to Committee on Appropriation.
Okay. Prefer this matter to Committee on Appropriations.
Where are now the committee reports?
Sir Floor, may we proceed with the committee report?
There are none committee report. Is there any member of this honorable chamber who has committee report? Please raise your hand. Anybody? Committee report? Since nobody is raising their hand, Honorable Chair, let's proceed to next item.
Okay, Madam Secretary.
For the business on second reading, so we have three. The first one, an ordinance declaring Bayan Kumpinagmulan as official hymn of the municipal of Epeel, which was laid on the table, is sponsored by Honorable Sheriff Mazin Hasim.
Hello. Mister Chair, I move that this ordinance be calendered for the next regular session. Thank you.
Okay. Uh let this ordinance again be calendered for second reading and the next regular session.
Item B, we have the adoption of Poliki Q R code program to be implemented this municipality. This is sponsored by Honorable Catherine Teralba. Item B, we have the adoption of Poliki QR Code Program to be implemented this municipality, this is sponsored by Honorable Catherine Turalba.
Still, Mr. Chair, that uh, I move that that matter be, still be calendered for the second reading.
Next regular session.
Item C.
Any big note, Madam Secretary? Yes, next item.
Item C, ordinance establishing an integrated system to prevent medicancy in the Municipal of Ipil and creating the Anti-Medicancy Board and providing penalties there of steal, sponsored by Honorable Catherine Turalba.
Still, Mr. Chair, I move that matter be uh tackled for second reading on the next regular session.
Let this ordinance again be calendered for second reading on the next regular session.
Other matters?
Other matters?
Other matters, Mr. Chair, I move for the suspension of the rules, Mr. Chair.
You're suspended.
Mr. Chair, uh, uh, previous regular session, the Sambor represent, uh, representation rendered a committee report being the chairperson on the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization regarding the deed of donation, uh, of the, of Miss Maricel C. De Leon, uh, who has expressed her, her intention to donate, uh, roads, road lots, open space and community facility at Top Mars Phase Five located at Barangay Veterans Village, this municipality. Indeed, uh, we passed that, uh, resolution, uh, approving the content of the deed of donation, uh, but that was, uh, laid on the table, uh, because there was an inquiry coming from, uh, one of the member of this honorable chamber, the Honorable Ramos, uh, if that, uh, if the taxes of that particular lots are being paid in this, in this, uh, LGU per verification, Mr. Chair. Uh, it was a clean, uh, clean, uh, uh, Top Mars Five had paid all the particular taxes, uh, pertaining to that particular lot, uh, in Veterans, uh, Village. To this, Mr. Chair, uh, I move, uh, for resolution withdrawing that, uh, with, uh, I move to retract that, uh, motion that was being withheld and, uh, moving, uh, Mr. Chair, to put that, uh, on the floor for further discussion.
Second to the motion.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Do you surrender discussion? Any objection? There been a motion, see by proof.
Mr. Chair? I move that, uh, the deed, uh, deed of donation of, uh, Top Mars Five located at Barangay Veterans Village, uh, with the intent of Miss Maricel C. De Leon being the developer to donate the, uh, road lots, the open space and community facility. Uh, as I said, Mr. Chair, uh, everything is cleared. Uh, I move that for the, uh, approval of the content of the deed of donation to be entered into by the Top Mars Five, uh, subdivision representing, uh, represented by Miss Maricel C. De Leon with the local government unit of Ipil, represented by the Honorable Anna Mel C. Oligario, the municipal mayor. I move, Mr. Chair.
Second to the motion.
I second, Mr. Chair.
Do you surrender discussion? Any objection? There been a motion, see by proof.
Another resolution, uh, Mr. Chair? Authorizing the local chief executive, the Honorable Anna Mel C. Oligario, to sign the deed of donation to be entered into by the local government unit of Ipil and the Top Mars subdivision respectively. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second to the motion.
I second to that motion.
Do you seconded by the Honorable Palalan? Discussion? Any objection? There been a motion, see by proof.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That will be on.
Other matters? Okay, first. Okay, recess for ten minutes.
Freedom speech? I'm starting point.
Can I? Okay, uh, Mr. Floor? Session be back order.
Hello.
The Honorable Sabihan?
Mr. Chair? Um, since, um, there's a request from our Regional Director of the Votr, um, for the, uh, to accommodate our, their event of Tourism Color Run of eight kilometers roadmap, um, Mr. Chair, um, I move, um, to, uh, resolution, um, to, um...
Ordinance? Ordinance? Do you surrender?
Urgency?
Yeah, kindly move for the, uh...
Move for the urgency of, um, said request, Mr. Chair, for the said request of...
Second to the motion. Do you surrender? Motion see by, carry.
Then I move to convene this body to Committee of Daul.
Convert? Any second to the motion to convert this body to the Committee of Daul. Do you surrender?
And I would like to pass...
Any objection? Motion see by proof.
I would like to pass our, um, ordinance, Mr. Chair, to, um, closure of, um, Lanis Magdaup Road to Magdaup Entry, then Piayon Exit, Pagadiyan, Sambuanga City, um, City Highway uh to the starting point of um Freedom Stage One-way closure Mister Chair Any second to the Discussion Yes the honorable
For clarification Mister Chair is this a one One lane closure One lane That's all Mister Chair
Okay anymore discussion Any amendments Objection there be none the motion is here by First reading Move for a recess Please Mister Second reading First reading Okay back order Move for approval of a first reading Mister Second reading Any motion For this ordinance for second reading Do you surrender discussion We're now in the period of discussion any Clarification Since we're already in the second reading Any amendments Objection Okay lang okay lang sa Pag-ano lang sa minute Yeah sa title oh Di- di- not lang Any objection
Mister Chair Just for clarification uh the specific time For
Three AM Two AM to nine AM Mister Two AM Any takeout madam Chair Any objection there be none the motion is here by Okay for Please Mister Okay move for recess Third reading Okay back order Um Mister Chair I would like to move to um to approval of a final and third reading Okay for those who are in favor of this ordinance kindly raise your right hand and say aye Aye Okay all members present are in favor So this ordinance is here by approval for the third and final reading May eighteen May eighteen May eighteen Sunday Okay back to regular session Anymore other matters The honorable Moment Okay there is none Any motion for the adjournment of the hundred forty
Motion for adjourn
Okay there is a motion for the adjournment of the hundred forty seventh regulation session Seconded by the honorable Sabihan Hundred forty seventh regulation session is adjourned
Mamad
Woi Apas Mazin kamay
Nasi kius
Magka bubu